All right, as we make our way in and close those doors, let me open us in a word of prayer as we begin our meeting here. This is not, by the way, an official congregational meeting. If you're a regular attendee, you can stay. This is an informal meeting, which we thought would be a good idea, and I'll explain that in a minute. But let me open us in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today's worship. We thank you for the truths with which we have come to know our Savior and have brought us into fellowship with one another. And the church is your idea, and we're grateful for that. And Lord, we ask that as we meet today and as we discuss next steps and answer questions to the degree that we can, we pray that you would continue to bind us together in a spirit of unity and mutual regard for one another and ultimately a unified vision for Crossroads, which you have blessed for so many years now. We ask it in Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Okay, so this morning is an informal meeting that we thought would be a good idea to have to, for two reasons. One, to really be very transparent with you and explain what the next steps are for Crossroads in lieu of my resignation. And two, to give you an opportunity to ask questions, and that's also in the spirit of transparency. And a lot of times, I think, well-meaning churches who have a book of church order or some constitution or bylaws and know what some of those next steps should be, just go ahead and begin to carry those out, and they don't communicate that well to the congregation because the average person in the congregation doesn't know what a book of church order is. Thank you, Chris. And doesn't care. And isn't aware of what needs to happen. So we want to be as thorough as we can this morning in explaining what some of those steps are, and then we want to give you an opportunity to ask questions about the things we're talking about here and about the things that are coming up. And so obviously, I announced my resignation a few weeks ago. The Session has, obviously, knew about that before, two Sundays ago. The Session has met once or twice in lieu of this news to get us to a place of figuring out what needs to happen next. And so the rationale I've already given you for this Town Hall meeting is not because it's required by our denomination. There are things that are required by our denomination. One of our elders is going to explain what they are in just a minute. This was really just in my talking with people who've gone through what I'm going through now and getting mentoring and advice. One PCA pastor in particular encouraged me to think about this kind of meeting, and I thought it was a great idea. And so I brought it to the elders, and they unanimously agreed that a Town Hall kind of meeting like this would be a really good idea. So we're going to try to seek to answer as many questions from you as we can. We might not be able to answer some just yet. We're not taking any votes, not making any decisions here today. It's just a time to explain and to ask questions. Now, before we go any further, I just want to say that the genius of Presbyterianism, in my opinion, is this, is that the congregation calls its senior pastor, that the congregation is the one that chooses who its shepherd will be. There are other positions on staff that the congregation doesn't necessarily have to be involved in, but in choosing a senior pastor, the congregation calls their senior and their associate pastors in the PCA. So we're not, the other genius of Presbyterianism is, for guys like me, you don't just have to make it up as you go along. We have in our denomination a Book of Church Order. In fact, you're required to almost memorize that Book of Church Order for ordination, and it lays out all kinds of bylaws and procedural things that is, it's written on the heels of experience, of things that can go wrong and things that have gone right over many years. And so if you actually read the Book of Church Order as a PCA church and you actually do what it says, you're generally going to be on pretty solid ground. And so we're not making it up as we go along, and we're going to explain in just a minute what that Book of Church Order tells us we need to do. And then what we'll do is we will open it up for questions. You can see there's a mic at the end of each of these aisles. We'll also have a mic runner for anybody who can't get up. But at this point, I'm going to invite one of our elders, Dan Glasser, to come up, and he's going to outline for you a little bit about what the Book of Church Order says the next steps are.
Well, as Josh was outlining all of that, it really seems, when you look at this, that what we have is a very challenging task as well as a responsibility. But I want to remind us all of what we read in Proverbs 16:9, where it says, "The heart of man plans his ways, but the Lord establishes his steps." And throughout this process, I think that that is important to keep in mind, that our reliance is primarily not on the Session, it's not on, as we'll talk about later, the pulpit committee, but our reliance remains primarily to be on God. So although this seems like a daunting task, fortunately, like Josh says, because we are in the PCA, we have a framework that addresses this very situation, and the process is outlined in the Book of Church Order. So our next step, and I think we have that up here, I have the task of reading this inspiring word to you that's up there. Please try to stay awake. So this is how the Book of Church Order addresses what we'll be doing. So we're going to hold a congregational meeting on November the 6th to establish a pulpit committee, and I'll read this as you can follow along. "Every church should be under the pastoral oversight of a minister, and when a church has no pastor, it should seek to secure one without delay. A church shall proceed to elect a pastor in the following manner. The Session shall call a congregational meeting to elect a pulpit committee, which may be composed of members from the congregation at large or the Session, as designated by the congregation. The pulpit committee shall, after consultation and deliberation, recommend to the congregation a pastoral candidate who, in its judgment, fulfills the constitutional requirements of that office and is most suited to be profitable to the spiritual interests of the congregation. The Session shall order a congregational meeting to convene at the regular place of worship. Public notice of the time, place, and purpose of this meeting shall be given at least one week prior to the time of the meeting." So our first step that we need to do is to establish a pulpit committee. So let's talk about what a pulpit committee does, and maybe the best thing to start with is what the pulpit committee does not do, because that will let us know what our responsibility is as a congregation. The pulpit committee does not choose a senior pastor for the church. The church calls the senior pastor. What the pulpit committee does is they take on the task of finding, interviewing, and vetting candidates for the position of senior pastor, and then they recommend to the congregation a candidate or candidates they believe may be best suited for the job. This means, as a congregation, we have two choices before us in establishing a pulpit committee next week. If you read through again through what the Book of Church Order says, it says that we may choose the Session to serve as the pulpit committee, or we may choose members of the congregation, which can include elders, to serve as the pulpit committee. So what would this process look like to us? Well, I can speak to what it would look like if the Session were chosen to serve as the pulpit committee. If we look at the history that we have here at Crossroads, I think that gives a picture of how the Session acts and how we have chosen staff in the past. If you look at the hiring that we have done of previous staff, when you look at the hiring of Dave and you look at the hiring of Mike, these were not as associate or senior pastor roles. So elsewhere in Church Order, it addresses that, and the Session is unilaterally able to make those decisions. But if you think back of when those hirings were done, although the Session made those hirings, we made great steps in making sure that we got input from the entire congregation on how we should move forward and if everybody, you know, felt that this was a good fit. And so when you look at our history, and that was a case when we didn't have to do that. In this case, if the Session served as the pulpit committee, we would certainly follow that same pattern. And what we would want to do is form an advisory committee to help us, and we would want people on that committee who would be a cross-section of Crossroads, that they wouldn't be representative of one particular entity, but really a crossroad of the whole congregation so that we would have input. And obviously, we would want input from the entire congregation if we did that. The commitment level is obviously very high for whatever we choose to do. It's going to be a labor-intensive process for both the Session and if we have an advisory committee along with that, or if we have a pulpit committee. Either way, it's going to be very labor-intensive, and a significant amount of time and effort and energy is going to have to be expended to get this accomplished. And we want to make sure that our process is deliberate and that it's thoughtful as we move forward, but we also want to make sure that we are consistently moving in the forward direction, because as we look back at what the Book of Church Order says, it's very important that we secure a pastor without delay. So obviously, as we move forward, this is going to be something that we take very seriously and keep on the front burner.
What that means for us going forward, as Dan mentioned first of all, and we'll have a letter for you to take with you, and for those who aren't here, they'll be getting that by way of email, is that we will hold a, as Dan mentioned, a congregational meeting, that's an official meeting, next Sunday, and that will not be to vote on a pastor or anything like that. We're not there yet, obviously, just to be clear. It's to vote on establishing a pulpit committee. And those two options that Dan outlined will be the options. One, the Session as pulpit committee, or two, members from the congregation to constitute that pulpit committee. Then at that point, the pulpit committee gets to work, beginning to interview, assemble, and vet candidates for the position. Let me say a word about that, and then we're going to open up the mics. The options before that pulpit committee, whoever that pulpit committee will be, are to find a candidate or candidates for the senior pastor position. We obviously have, besides myself, two other men on staff, Pastor Mike Hernandez, who's the associate pastor here, and Dave Crossan. Dave is not ordained in the PCA yet. That is Dave's goal, and that is what he is in school for and is moving toward. Mike, of course, is an ordained teaching elder in the PCA of about a decade now, and he's an associate pastor here. Of those two men, Mike is eligible as a candidate for this position, and so he would be, you know, that would be one option that the pulpit committee could look at. We don't know how long it will take for the pulpit committee to reach its conclusion, obviously, and we don't know ultimately the decision regarding the next pastor, but as we move now and open up the mics for you to ask questions, let me just try to knock out a few anticipatory questions, the way Paul does in some of his letters, just knowing what you're thinking. We could save a little bit of time. One of them I already answered, which is, what about the other guys who are here serving us at Crossroads? I hopefully have answered that question. One in the back will bring a mic to you. And if you, finally, if you're uncomfortable speaking publicly, you have a question, you're physically able to come up, but you're just so nervous, we understand that. We're going to stick around afterwards. You can come talk to us individually. So with that, these microphones are open for you to come, line up, and begin asking questions. Maybe we can put that one up. And here we go.
So maybe for some people who didn't grow up in the Presbyterian church, me being one of them, you could explain what the Session is and how those people get their office?
So the word Presbyterian, Prespeduris, actually means elder, presbyter. And so our church is ruled and governed by elders, and it's us plus Matt Seda, who was traveling this weekend and couldn't be here. And we are elected by the congregation, so the congregation nominates men. Those men are interviewed and determined to be eligible. There's criteria that Paul gives to Timothy and Titus about elders, so we follow those criteria. And then we would have a congregational meeting, and the congregation would elect yes or no whether that man should be an elder of our church. So that's, those men that are elected as elders, that's us plus Matt, they become the church session, and our Book of Church Order charges us with certain responsibilities for the spiritual oversight of the church. So does that cover? Okay. That was a good question, though.
So it's just the elders?
So it's just the elders. We also have deacons. We have another office in the church of deacon, but they are not part of the Session. They're part of the diaconate, and they're charged with governing the physical needs of the church and its congregation.
We should mention that one of our elders is not here.
Yeah, Matt Seda.
Yeah, Matt Seda, yeah.
What type of majority does it take to vote in a pastor, and what would be the process if there was, you know, a 51-49 or the appearance of lack thereof unity?
So it's a, there's some nuance to that answer, but what I can say here is, you need a majority, obviously. The Book of Church Order does make a provision, and I believe it's chapter 23, where if there is a substantial enough minority that is not in favor of the candidate and votes nay, that the Session is charged at that point to go back and reconsider, even though that candidate received a majority technically, that they ought to reconsider the fact that a substantial minority of the church is not comfortable with that candidate. You going to add something to it?
So we are supposed to, the majority should reconsider. They can still, they can still go forward if they want, but if it was 51-49, right? Like if it was me, and it's not going to be me, but if I was up for vote and only 51% of you wanted me and 49% didn't, the Session's job is to say to the 51%, "Really think about this, because a substantial part of your congregation doesn't want this guy to be the pastor." But it's up to the congregation at that point to decide still how to move forward. Just one more. If it's, could Josh mention the potential that Mike could be, is a candidate? Not the potential, you are. If Mike is to be elected, 80% of the congregation has to vote for Mike because he's already our associate pastor. That's a provision that's, for something that's not happening here, where they just want to make sure that an associate pastor is not sort of manipulating and forcing things behind the scene to move the pastor out of his way so he can become the senior pastor. So it's a provision to make sure that the congregation is not just forcing the senior pastor out to throw the associate pastor, who they like better, in there. But it would still require us 80% to elect Mike as the senior pastor.
Yeah, that's a really good, that's why I said it's a bit nuanced, because like Andrew rightly noted, I did mention Mike. Maybe we could just throw up chapter 23 there. Again, another inspiring passage, but this passage is, again, I think the genius of Presbyterianism is, you know, there's very few situations in which you're not, which you're out there on a raft with no oar. You know, they've thought through a lot of this stuff, and this refers to what Andrew was just mentioning. And so, actually, that's not the right section. Is there another one there?
Second part of 23.
Is there another slide there? There we go. Yeah. So the associate pastor is normally not to succeed the senior pastor without an intervening term of service in a different field of labor, for the reasons Andrew mentioned. But a congregation by a secret ballot of four fifths, secret ballot just means you don't have to raise your hands, you just, you know, it's a ballot you turn in, just like any other vote. Can petition the Presbyterian for an exception, and the Presbyterian then votes to accept that exception, understanding that the church really wants that. So that is a different thing than a majority. That's an overwhelming majority in that case. You can take that down if you want. Ken?
Where would candidates be sourced, or how would you find other candidates?
I'll go again. Okay. So I think one way or another, whether it's the Session as the public committee or you elect members at large, the Session will help with that sourcing. We would go to the, we can go to the PCA, our seminaries at the PCA, and the denomination itself, and post our job opening essentially, and say that we're accepting applications. And so some people might apply through that means. There are other agencies and stuff that we could use. When we've hired, I think both when we hired Dave and Mike, we used Gospel Coalition, is that who it was, I believe, to accept some applications through there. That is a much broader net, and it tends, we got all kinds of very weird applications through that one. I'll just leave it at that. But we would use different things to post that we had a job opening. I think also, word would also just sort of spread, right? I mean, probably by now, most of the churches in our Presbyterian know that Josh has resigned. So word would also just spread, and we would, you know, people, some people will probably just start applying without us doing very much because they've heard that the opening exists. But we would go mostly to our denomination is probably the best way for us to go and post our job opening.
Good morning.
Morning.
While the pulpit committee will do the homework in lifting up candidates and vetting them, can you explain how the vote will happen? Will the congregation, will they be lifting up one individual at a time for the congregation to make a call to avoid an either-or type situation with the vote? Is just one, one person lifted up at a time, or is it either or?
Great question.
Does anybody else have a problem?
Should I take that one?
I'll take.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't mind, okay.
No, you're on a roll.
Yeah.
I'm going to get a cookie.
So it's really kind of up to them. I think it, you know, ideally, they would recommend one candidate, I would think, but it's really up to them. If they feel like, hey, there's two people, and it's basically a coin flip, they're, I think they're allowed to come and say this. Now, they should also give information, like, "We think this is the best candidate because." They shouldn't just say, "We think Dan's the best candidate, just trust us, don't ask any questions." So they should, you know, also be giving us information about why they're thinking that's the best candidate and explaining it. But if they really felt like there was more than one, they can make a recommendation. We don't want them to feel like there's 10 and make a recommendation of 10, because then they really haven't done their job, because they're really saying, "There's 10 possible people, and now we've got to all take all this time as a whole congregation to try and figure out which of these 10 would maybe be best for the job." So their job is to really narrow this down. There's no set number given, but their job is to really make a strong recommendation about who the congregation should call as its senior pastor. So I would hope that it wouldn't be more than one or two, you know, and ideally, probably just one. They should really settle on one candidate and say, "This is a recommendation." Remember, the congregation is free to say, "No, thanks, like, that's your recommendation, but we're saying no, we want something else." We'd probably then have to go back to the pulpit committee and say, "Please start again" and find another candidate at that point.
Just one note on that, too, is in the past, when there's been a search, it's not, the candidates that are under consideration have generally, the congregation has had access to them. So in the case of an external search, which is worth noting, is there's, the internal question is, is the candidate internal? But then if there is an external search, typically, there's a process whereby external candidates are brought in, and the congregation as a whole has a chance to evaluate them as well, so that it's not as though you're finding out about someone once they're nominated. There's typically been some ability to examine them in a fair amount of depth over the course of a weekend.
I would think anyone that's a strong, we would probably want the congregation to hear that person preach, for instance, would be, if they were making it that far along, it might be a wise thing for the public committee to say, "Let's invite this person to come preach one Sunday and let everybody have a feel for what we'd be hearing on Sunday mornings," if they haven't already heard that person preach, so.
Yeah, and highlighting what Dan had said earlier, that in some of the recent hires that we've done that resulted in Dave and Mike on staff, where the Session wasn't required to go through some of those steps, they did anyway. And you might remember, if you were here at that time, that that involved multiple dinners with different ministry leaders, elders, officers of the church, also some Sunday exposures, both in the context like this and in luncheons and things like that. So all of those things would undoubtedly be a part of that. So you have, first time you're laying eyes on a candidate, it isn't just to vote yea or nay.
And historically, what we have done as a Session is, when we have had candidates to hire, we have voted on an up or down vote, not putting candidates against each other for a vote. That's historically what the Session has done.
Hi, Gordon.
Is there any implications or requirements that when you have a change in senior pastor, that there's some impact on the rest of the staff? I've heard churches say that the senior pastor comes in, and he gets to pick new associate pastor and so on and so on. So is there any implications there in the process?
That's a, that's a good question. Now, in the PCA, again, the associate pastor is called by the congregation. So it's not, and I could be crass here, it's not, it's not the same as when a new head coach comes in for the team, and he brings all of his assistant coordinators and everything with him. It's not like that, because again, in the Presbyterian form of government, you have called your associate pastor to come and be your pastor. The only way you're getting rid of your associate or senior pastor is that you're getting rid of them. And you do have that, and that provisions are in the Book of Church Order, and you can petition Presbyterian to dissolve that pastoral relationship. And so that speaks to the associate and senior pastor positions. The other positions, such as an assistant pastor or just staff members, are generally hires and fires by the Session. And so there would be no one person who would be able to come in and sweep the decks. Yeah. Ken?
My first question is really asking for clarification. Talked about the pulpit committee as a possibility. You talked about the Session effectively being the pulpit committee, but I heard the word a couple of times, advisory group. Now, was that another name for the pulpit committee, or is that a group that separately advises the Session?
The advisory committee is separate from the pulpit committee. So the two options for a pulpit committee are either to have the Session serve as the pulpit committee, or the, or members of the congregation, which could include members of the Session on the pulpit committee. If the Session was elected as the pulpit committee, we would want to form an advisory committee that we could talk to, that would be very much involved in the process of the search that we do for a pastor. So that, that would be a subset of, if we, if we were the pulpit committee as the Session, what we would utilize. That would be our method.
Thank you. That was the easy question. Now, the next one is maybe one that will be more difficult to answer, but nevertheless, we now know that Josh's intention is to exit the building at some point in the future. I don't know whether it's appropriate to ask, is that going to happen next week or next month? But clearly, it has a relevance to the future, not only the timing of his leaving, but also to the possibility that we've heard about today, which is that an existing staff member who is suitably qualified could be called, subject, I think, to an 8% congregational vote, but also there was a requirement for that person to have served in a different field. I can't remember the exact words. So has Mike had a disadvantage to external candidates in that respect?
So just to clarify, Mike can be elected, let's pretend for a second Josh wasn't resigning.
You could put 23 back up there.
Mike can only become our senior pastor if he leaves and goes somewhere else and comes back later, or if 80% of the congregation says, "We want Mike to be our senior pastor." It's a, he doesn't have to go somewhere else to be our senior pastor if 80% of the congregation elects him.
It's either or.
Yes. So he doesn't have to go anywhere.
My third greedy bite. What changes, if any, are you planning to make in the leadership day to day, given Josh's intent to exit the building at some point in the future? Will it lead to changes in preaching, other duties, and so forth?
Yeah, that's, these are all good questions. So the short answer to that question is that, as I've been working with the Session, I have said that, as Jen and I have been praying about our timeline, which is partly in that question, we recognize that upon this announcement, we're not here indefinitely, nor do we wish to be, as we seek to follow what God's calling us to do. But I also recognize it's a massive shift for the church, and this church has not been through anything like this exactly. And so I want to help the church. And so, I wanna help the church transition well. I'm the moderator of the session as a senior pastor, and I'm also, as you know, the senior pastor. So, what I'm trying to do, and actually really have been trying, I think, is to share leadership and pastoral responsibility with these other men. We'll continue to do that. But, I also know that some of that timeline, for me, will also be slightly, I won't say completely, but slightly determined by which direction the church chooses to go in terms of this process. How long would the church want or need or either or is something I think that session and I are still talking through and thinking and praying through. So I don't have a definitive answer there, but the direct, the direct third, yeah, no, it's not next week, no. The direct answer to your direct question is continuing to try to share pastoral leadership as much as is appropriate, yeah. We had someone over here, there he is.
So, the, the spirit of this question is one more about the concern for the workload and all of that as, as any, there's an enormous amount of work that goes on in leading this, this congregation, and thank you for all the years that you've done. On the chance that Mike, this is a conjecture basis question, on the, the, the idea, the possibility that Mike ends up being recommended as a session, does the pulpit committee dissolve after that? Or do they maintain and continue their work to find a backfill replacement for Mike? So that there isn't a lot of work that doesn't really get divvied up, so to speak?
In this case, the pulpit committee would be tasked with nominating a candidate for the position of senior pastor solely. And so, that's primarily the task of the pulpit committee. Is it really just a nominating committee? And they would, they would gather together and they would determine, most likely, is the, is, is that candidate internal? If so, that's a relatively quick process. And if that's the case, and Mike were to be nominated and voted in, then they would likely dissolve. And then we would address separately the question of backfilling that youth position. That could be an ordained person, not an ordained person, whatever it may be, but it would be separate from the pulpit committee. So that would really be a separate process to backfill in the position of, of youth and family, if that makes sense.
And just to round out what Dave said, which is all exactly accurate, if the pulpit committee went external, it would be most likely a longer process, but it would also, once that process was completed, dissolve, its work has been finished. The, the Book of Church Order requires a pulpit committee to fill the past, the senior pastor position. And then at that point, you know, we'd have a, a certain makeup of staff and we'd have to figure out, if there were any resulting needs, how they would be addressed.
Yeah, the question of internal nomination versus an extensive external search has a significant bearing on the timeline, which is related, I think, to your question, Graham, is what's the timeline of all this? Part of that hinges on the question of nominating an internal candidate and if there's agreement there versus a more extensive external search.
So, we keep saying, the possibility of Mike filling that position, is that something that you're actually interested in doing?
What if he says no?
Thanks for the question, Amber. Because this decision ultimately rests in the congregation, I'd answer it this way. If, if the congregation would have me, I'd be honored, humbled, and excited to be the next senior pastor of Crossroads Presbyterian Church. I am ready, and we are ready. And what I mean by that is, my wife and I are ready for this next possibility. There's a lot to that, but we feel confident in what God has called us to do. And I have her full support, without which I would not be able to do what I do and continue to do what I do. Secondly, the partnership that Marcel and I have built with Amber and Dave through mutual love, care, born through some struggle and suffering as well, I would say that I would approach the office with the utmost confidence, because of my wife and because I couldn't ask for a better co-laborer in Dave. So again, if the congregation would have me, it would be the honor of my life.
Josh, I'm gonna miss you. Thank you for the, that answer. I have a bunch of questions. Wanted to know, when we're voting on whether we're gonna have a pulpit committee or a session, is that just the vote? Because I would imagine that we would have to, if we decide a pulpit committee, then how do we decide who's on that?
Yeah, good question. So, if we vote next week to form a pulpit committee from scratch, so to speak, from an assembly of a cross-section of the congregation, I think at that point, the session would be ready to get back together, put some names together, take nominations for people for that committee from, from the congregation, and then present at a separate meeting, a batch of people to, to, to vote on. Because it is, according to chapter twenty, something the congregation would need to approve, a pulpit committee. And so, that would be a second, a second step.
Okay. I'm not sure how the vision of the church has been determined, but I would imagine new leadership would have their own vision. And my understanding is, the pulpit committee and the session has usually a bank of questions to get to, what is at the heart of the man they're interviewing? Do we have such questions? Do we have, Josh, did you set the vision of the church? Was that something you determined with the, with the session? And would that change? Are we gonna bring that forward, so even as a congregation, we know, wow, this man has what we want?
Well, there's probably a couple of answers to that, because it's a multifaceted question. If you know the history of Crossroads, you know Jim and I were here together for many years. And so, I would say Jim and I together set the vision of this church in its infancy, including some of what I think are probably some of the pillars or hallmarks of the church, including missions and orphan care and expository preaching. That said, I think the staff that's come along under us has caught some of that vision over the years. And I think it would be to the pulpit committee's best interest to say, how much of that vision do we like still and wanna retain and, and impose, if you will, or set out for the new candidate? And can they meet those criteria? And, conversely, how much of that is lacking in some way? And we want something else, and we can craft that. That would all be the pulpit committee's responsibility. That's why Dan made a point to say, it's a, it's a commitment. It's a commitment to be a part of a pulpit committee, not just in terms of the length, but in terms of the depth of, of the kind of work that has to be done.
Sorry, I know I'm long-winded, but this is, from my experience, this is so essential and oftentimes, I love the Presbyterian because we take such care, because the preaching of the word is first and foremost, and to find that man that will give us the word of God is so essential. But I wanted to know, have we, do we have like a, an official job description for a senior pastor? I wonder how much, how much are we ask, did we ask too much of you, Josh? Has the church built in reviews? Are we protecting our men? Because I work in a nonprofit and, you know, basically, you do everything. And, you know, in these kind of service industries, there's a lot of burnout. I know the pandemic caused a lot of burnout for pastors, and I'm just wondering, you know, is there a vision to bring in more support for the pastors, to give them more sabbaticals? And do we even know what you do and what we're asking of the next person?
What do you do here?
I mean, besides the preaching.
Catch that reference, if you will. Those are all good questions, but I'll just try to answer it, and if anybody else wants to jump in, go ahead. But, I would say, well, first of all, let me just make clear again, this, I'm not leaving out of burnout at all. I've never felt, and we've never been healthier as a family. So I've, I've always felt Crossroads was very good to its pastors. I think Jim felt the same way, and still does, as a supportive missionary. And so, I leave with a full heart. I, I have no burnout at all. Any burnout I've had over the years is probably a result of life circumstances and my own sin. Take that for what you want. But you have been great. So, that, that's, I just wanna reiterate that, because what you're saying is true, and pastors leave the ministry all the time because of that. That's not why I'm resigning. Again, I think the session and pulpit committee, and that could be one entity, or it could be two, would tackle those questions and, and begin to address those things, job description, vision and values, how does, you know, how is that position going to be reviewed? What will its support staff look like? You know, there's a lot, there's a lot there for that committee to do. That job description usually starts by tapping the guy who's in the job, just like in many places, and saying, "What do you do here? Write it all down for us, so we know what to look for." You know, so at some point, that will happen, you know. I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'll just add, when we do call our senior pastor, that process includes presenting what earthly compensation we as a church are putting forward to them. So that not includes their salary, but anything like a sabbatical every so often or things like that. So we, and the Presbyterian reviews that and will make sure that, you know, we're not offering some guy ten thousand dollars a year and two days off, you know, kinda thing.
Yeah, great point. Yeah, in fact, the denomination has certain requirements for a senior pastor in terms of that, not in terms of a dollar amount, per se, the church is free to determine those things, but vacation time and, and some of the, the aspects of compensation, that's true, yeah.
I just wanted to add that one of the things that we, as a session, did, and it was a number of years ago, and Bud, you could probably speak more to it than I can, is the sabbatical. The senior pastors have a sabbatical, I believe it is once every five years. And we feel that that is really important. We, we recognize the, the pressures that our pastors are under, and we see that as a really, really important thing that they have, not just to recharge and refresh, but also to reflect. And I, I think that, you know, and Josh, you could speak to that maybe too, that maybe this past sabbatical was not just recharging, but also reflecting on where we're at, where they're at, and what God is calling them to do. And I think that's an important and really good thing that our session has done in the past.
Yeah, amen. I, I know some guys who go twenty years and don't get a sabbatical, and I think the session and Bud was at the front of that years and years ago, recommending that policy, and it's been in place for all of our ordained teaching elders on staff. They're offered that, that opportunity. And there's been times where we didn't take it or delayed it, and there's been times where we take it and, and it results in what Dan said. Remember, if you can't come up front or even aren't comfortable doing that, just raise your hand, we'll get the microphone to you. Wait, can you wait for the mics, everybody can hear your question? Yeah, no, no problem.
Sorry. Do you eventually become a member of this congregation, or is that too messy, because then people will come to you for everything?
I love that, very practical question. Perfect. So I'm actually not a member of this church even now. All teaching elders who are ordained in our denomination, their membership is actually in the denomination, in the Presbyterian. So, I'm not a member of Crossroads, and when my resignation is accepted by the congregation, which is an actual vote you have to take, then, I don't get any ideas, like, you're not gonna accept it. I've never heard of that happening. Then, I wouldn't be a member of Crossroads anyway, because my membership has always been in the Presbyterian. But the real, I think the heart of your question is, where do I, where, where am I? And how does that function? And I'm very aware, and in speaking with other pastors who've been in my position and have been in long-tenured pastors in a church, I'm, I understand, there's a shadow that's cast, it's by nature, and so we would be, I would be very sensitive to that. And we would make that decision in all love and humility at that time to figure out what that would look like. That was a very politician-like answer, but I really don't know how else to answer it right now. But just trust my heart, that I would never wanna get in the way of whoever was next.
So, I'm a little uncomfortable asking this question, but obviously, if the session is the group doing the, the search, my question is, if there's a pulpit committee, would win and be possible?
Yeah, so, if we form a public committee that's not the session, any member of the church in good standing is eligible to be a member of the pulpit committee. Josh mentioned that, as a session, we discuss the possibility, what if you asked the session to do it? And so, that's why we have the advisory committee, because we would want to include, as Dan mentioned, a cross-section of the church, and that would include women being on that advisory committee. So, if it's not the session, then yes, it's whoever you elect, and that can be anybody that's a member of the church. If it is the session, we plan on including women in the advisory committee.
It seems like we're set up two choices, to commit. You know, either the session does it, or we have another committee that does it. And if the session does it, we have advisory committee. To me, the sound of the advisory committee seems to me, may, isn't there any way to mesh those two things together into one group that does this search and this determination, rather than either or, put them together?
I mean, you, you could choose to elect the session plus three, four other people to be the advisory committee. So it's, it's, it's either just the session, like, you, you can just, you're basically saying, you're sort of basically saying, "We already have a standing committee that makes decisions in the church, let's just let them do it." And that would be if you choose the session. Or it's, we're gonna pick people. And you are free to pick all of us, plus four, five, however many other people you want. Use wisdom, having an advisory, having a public committee of twenty-five people would probably not be prudent and accomplish anything, so you wanna keep the number small enough to get work done. But yeah, you could choose, let's choose the session plus four, let's choose the session plus whatever.
Well, I bring that up because it sounded like it was an either or, and it seems to me, I don't think there's a lot of dissatisfaction in the direction we're going as a church and have been going. So having a lot of the leadership involved would make the process quicker and probably easier, but with an advisory committee, it almost feels like that's one-off as a part, as opposed to a direct part of it.
We began to discuss the advisory committee because we were like, well, what if they do ask us to do it? We would wanna be able to say what that would look like. So, we haven't gone like very far with that, because you haven't made your decision. But we just wanted to say, you know, when we had this meeting, if they asked us to do it, what would that exactly look like? Be able to answer that question. Whereas if you choose a public committee that's not us, we can't tell you exactly what that would look like, because you'll be choosing the people and, you know, they'll be more in charge of setting their own schedule and things like that. But we could answer what it would look like if you asked us to be the public committee.
That's why I'm suggesting that there's probably a more streamlined way to do this.
Well, maybe just, because I think I understand what Don's saying, is, we're, we're saying either or because it's the way it's worded in Boko chapter twenty. So in other words, we have to elect a pulpit committee. We have no option there. The, the way that chapter twenty is worded is, that pulpit committee can be, by vote of the congregation, either the session or made up of members-at-large, is the language that was there. And so, that's either or. But, that members-of-large, of course, can include elders, because all these ruling elders are members of the church. So, this public committee could look, be constituted of really a mixture of some, some elders and some of you, it could look like that. But this first option here of choosing the session, if, if the congregation chose the session as the pulpit committee, what the session thought of ahead of this meeting, that might be good for people to know, and be ahead of next week's meeting, is, they would try to establish an advisory panel, a non-voting but advisory panel, that would work alongside of the decision-making body, the session, in vetting candidates and all that. I mean, ultimately, the pulpit committee really isn't a decision-making body, except for they decide who to put in front of the congregation for a vote, so.
I've said enough, I've said enough.
Yeah.
Just to add to that, the, the advisory committee is not addressed at all in Book of Church Just to add to that, the advisory committee is not addressed at all in Book of Church Order.
Right.
That is just, if the session was elected, that is a, one of the methods that we would use in our search.
Right. Yeah. The real Boco options before you are, let's choose the session to do this, or let's make up a committee from scratch, from members.
In some churches, the senior pastor simply does all the preaching, the associate pastor fills in, and then the senior pastor's on vacation or something. This church, starting with Jim and Josh, had about a close thing to a co-pastor and he was up with, and it still functioned. And I think that that has continued as the staff has changed. And we've been blessed with men that can both be good preachers and good teachers. And so they've been used effectively. This idea of the role of the senior pastor and associated staff, is this something that, I'll call it the public committee, but if it's just the session, would incorporate in their search that, you know, the person is, you know, is not gonna take over and do all the preaching?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that how that happens? Or is there more engagement with the congregation?
Well, I think that dovetails with best question, which is kind of the job description of what that, you know, what the church thinks it wants going forward. You know, I mean, it might be that some people were like, we didn't really like that. We'd rather have just heard Jim all those years. Right? So they would have to determine that. For my part, you know, I think it was Jim's wisdom to see that two were better than one, because it's not normal for a senior pastor to want to share the pulpit. But I think Jim saw the wisdom in that early on, when he and I were working together. And I enjoyed that. And I think when Jim left, you didn't ask for all this, but point of personal privilege, when Jim left, I missed that. I missed being able to sit under the word. And that's why as these guys came along, not only did I want them to develop their skill set, because I think it's good for the church, but I also enjoyed sitting under the preaching of the word, because I think it's good for me and good for the congregation. So it is a very different model than most PCA churches have. It would be up to the session, and ultimately the senior pastor probably, once he's in office, to determine, hey, I like that model. Let's see if I can keep it going. Or, you know, I love preaching 50 weeks of the year, and I'll give New Year's Eve and my one week of vacation to the other guys, you know. They could do that. That could happen. You know, there's no requirement on them to share the pulpit.
You want the mic? Thank you.
I just want to perhaps reiterate our thinking on this advisory committee. If you do select us to be the pulpit committee, what our thinking was, we want to know the heartbeat of the church then. And the way we, now, see, if you asked us our opinion, we will give them to you. But we wanted to know your opinion about candidates. So what we were thinking was, let's reach out to Harry Roberts, George Crossland, Amber Lally.
Easy, easy, easy.
Oh, wait a minute, I went overboard. And invite those people into an intimate conversation. What is your heart thinking? What is your family thinking about this candidate? We don't want to dictate. What we are seeking, and I have been biting my tongue for weeks...
Get ready to cut his mic.
To ask people.
Please have your finger on that mic.
Right.
Good night.
To ask people, what is your heart in this matter? That's what I see the advisory committee doing. I'm done.
Yeah, sure you are.
Not to be rude, but it doesn't make sense to me. Like, then just have a pulpit committee. Because the pulpit committee has specific guidelines. Who's guiding? Who picks the advisory board? Will new members get in, old, young? Or is it just gonna be your cronies? I mean, with the pulpit committee, you're gonna do it following the Book of Church Order. Advisory committee, you aren't. So why don't we just have a pulpit committee if that's your heart?
So it's, so again, this is the congregation's decision entirely. And it's up to you to decide which one you want. And I'm, we've been, you know, we've just talked about the idea in general in session meeting. And I personally have a mixed bag of which way to go. I wouldn't say one is necessarily, in one sense, better than the other. The one advantage to the session is that it's the time commitment. So we could give less work to the advisory committee than they would have to do if they were on the pulpit committee. Because we can look at, we can start looking through all the resumes and say, no, no, not that guy. You know, we can do some very general weeding out of, I mentioned when we tried, when we hired both Mike and Dave, we got some crazy applications, right? And we spent a few hours reading all those applications and just, you know, by, without even like a hand vote, like, hey, this guy said X, right? He's out, right? Like, that's a little crazy. Yep, he's out. So if we did an advisory committee, they wouldn't have to do all that work. We could sort of bring them in at the, okay, we've got 10 really good guys. Or let's just bring the advisory committee in and ask them, do you like that we're all about missions? Do you like that we're all about orphan care? Do you like that we're focused on preaching? And save them some of that administrative burden and time that they would have to fill in. We're already meeting at least once a month, and for the past, since Josh told us, we've been meeting weekly, pretty much, as a session. So that's the only one practical advantage, is that we could say, you can still be really involved, really give your input. We'd really want to listen to you, because if the entire advisory committee says, no, we don't like missions, or, I mean, that might be a bigger issue. But, you know, if they, if they were totally against a certain candidate, then we would not want to continue with that candidate as a session, because that should just be an indication that that's gonna be a bigger problem than just these people. We've, you know, we've tried, we know how people that are sort of like, you know, involved in the cross-section, what Crossroads loves and feels it's about. And so if they say no, then we don't need to come to the congregation and say, what do you think about this guy? Because we should already have a good feeling. So that's the big thing, is the, it is a lot of time. It is a lot of, some of it is just busy work in the sense of reading through applications and like, you know, just, you know, we might do a quick phone interview with somebody and like, you know, realize that, you know, this guy's just not coming off right. And we could save some people some of the time it would take to really be involved in this. That's the one advantage for the session. But, and that's why we wanted an advisory committee, because we didn't want to say, not the congregation, this is the congregation's decision. And so we want the congregation to be involved in making that decision through the whole process. But we could save you some, some busy work and some of your time commitment. You could still be very committed and do things, but not stuff that you're just feeling like, I didn't know, signing up to read 10 hours' worth of job applications by people that we're not even really gonna consider.
I'm not a very good public speaker, however. I do have a couple of points. First of all, we have been so fortunate to lead this congregation with Pastor Jim and Josh and all of you folks. I think I have a question, and it's probably an obvious answer. But talking about all this committee, that committee, and so forth, is there no option for a majority of the pastors, of the us? Why do we have to have all the committees if the majority, 80 or 90% of people are happy with Mike being the senior pastor and Dave hopefully coming up happy with that?
Well, we've got Boco.
Yep.
So we don't make it up as we go along. That's the short answer to your question. That's why Dan outlined that. We are required, as a church in the PCA, to follow this procedure. Yeah, we're required to do it. We're required to form a public committee. And then we've already laid out for you what the provisions that are there for that, and then what the options are for an associate to take that senior position. The PCA has a bias in the Book of Church Order, Chapter 23, they have a bias against the associate pastor becoming the senior pastor. Bias is most likely the result of experience, because you have situations in churches where there is divided personality cults. It's never been the case here. But, and so in some ways, you say, okay, well, that doesn't apply. But it's there for that reason. That's why they say the associate pastor must leave and serve somewhere else if he ever wants to come back and be the senior, unless, unless forfeits of the congregation petitions Presbyterian and says, can't we make an exception in this case?
Sure. So where I am right now is, I'm ordained as a ruling elder. So in the PCA, the session is made up of ruling elders and teaching elders. So a ruling elder is not, maybe, the process of ordination is to become ordained as a teaching elder. And so where I am in that process, I'm about 60% of the way through seminary. So probably still about two to three years left at that. I'm able to take about one class at a time. So it's a bit of a slow burn, but probably still about two to three years away from that. I'm licensed, so there's two, two levels of sort of credentialing, so to speak. One is licensure and one is ordination. And licensure is where you've been examined orally and through several written exams as well by the Presbyterian, and deemed licensed to preach on a regular basis. So that's licensure. I've completed that. But ordination requires the completion of the seminary degree, which I'm still probably two to three years away on.
We have time for one or two more questions, so if you've got them, don't hold them.
I gotta ask at least one question, because my wife asks. Have a public document or something on file, or the profile of the congregation, has a profile of the congregation available, taking, meaning the demographics of the population church, at this age bracket, how many United Family families?
Can I take that, Dave?
Because that's a little useful, to whoever's coming in to the pastor, is what's the makeup of the congregation? Is it very young, old?
Yeah, we have a system called BREEZE. You've heard us probably reference that from time to time. But it's essentially the digital record-keeping of the church, and in it contains all the information that we have on members, from their location, the age, to when they were, when they joined, and all that, that kind of information. So we have a fair amount of that, of that data available.
Last chance, folks. All right. If you want to come and ask a question afterwards, we will stick around. If you're not comfortable talking on a microphone, that's no problem. We'll be here for a few minutes. And of course, not just for a few minutes, but ongoing. And so just to remind you and to point out, we have this congregational meeting next week. We're required, once again, by the Book of Church Order, to give seven days' notice. And so you are getting notice today, and you will get this letter. As you walk out the door, do not leave without this letter, which puts it all in writing for you. And everyone else who's not here will also be getting this. And this is a letter calling you to come and join us for, most assured, there'll be a shorter meeting next week, where we will take a vote to establish the pulpit committee based on the two options we've laid out for you this morning. That will be all the business that's being conducted at that meeting, just voting to establish the pulpit committee. So we've... No. No, you're choosing either the session or to establish one from scratch. And so we'll, we'll take that vote next week. Good question. So grab this letter on your way out. Please join us next Sunday for that congregation. That will be an official congregational meeting. We'll have to call it to order and take minutes and all of that. Let me pray for us as we take off. Father, I thank you for this time. I thank you for the questions, the clarity that you continue to give, Lord, to the church as it moves forward. And we pray that you would, in all things, be honored and glorified. In Jesus's name, amen. God bless.